Welcome everybody to the, exactly, to the town board work session of Tuesday, April 24th, 2018. And first on our agenda, we're gonna talk about sewer diversion. So, welcome Kevin.
Yeah, do you want me to put you guys up to date?
Please.
Yeah, if you can get it, get us up to speed.
And you know what, we should just take in, I want to identify yourselves just for the record, we're recording. So, we'll make sure we private, we can do it.
What?
Just your name.
Oh, Kevin, yeah.
Kevin, you're the attorney for Riverwoods and...
Yeah, I'm also the attorney for Random Farms.
But you're here today for Riverwoods.
Yeah.
And who else do we have here, just to...
Marshall Scheff, I'm a resident.
Don Mahaney, resident of...
Riverwoods.
Riverwoods, yeah.
On the sewer board.
I'm Peter Izzo, I'm with, I'm a resident on the board of Chestnut Oaks.
And I'm Debbie Leosie, I'm with Barhart and Helfinger, I manage Chestnut Oaks.
She's the proper manager.
Oh, so you're not about the diversion?
You're not about the diversion.
We're gonna be doing the trap line next, that's next.
Well, I'll listen.
That's okay, well, diversion's first on the agenda, so it's a good point.
We're doing sewage.
But it's good, yeah, for the sea.
Just don't leave her at that, just don't leave her at that, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay, so, so what has happened is, I'm gonna say, Riverwoods and Random Farms are both entitled to, you know, a regulatory upgrade paid for by the city of New York. And that was, you know, that was 1997 MOA that this town signed, and it was supposed to have been done by 2002. Okay? And there was a hundred, I'm telling you a lot, but just get the framework. There was a hundred and seven wastewater treatment plants that had to be upgraded. And there's now about six or seven that aren't done. Random Farms, Riverwoods, who were stalled because of diversion. But then in Bedford, there was, Bedford is...
You're doing it.
The correctional facility, right?
Yeah, there's like...
But that's gonna go ahead, that's, that's supposed to go ahead.
That's supposed to go ahead, yeah. I think that's it, but I think that's like three or four, you're combining three or four regulatory upgrades into one solution.
That may be it, that may be, I don't...
So, so this is it, this, this closes?
This closes, yeah.
Wow.
And, I mean, you guys may have ever met Bob Rivallo, if you're...
Yep.
Yes.
He's retired, okay.
Unfortunately.
And what had happened is, EFC, when, when they did the regulatory upgrade, you know, what they had to do is, you know, they had to get money out to engineers, to contractors, and there was no way for the city of New York to get money out quickly. So, the EFC, the state organization, agreed to manage, administer the program, and the city would pre-fund it. So, they'd give them $10 million at the beginning of the year, so that when a contractor submitted his invoice, it could get paid in 10 days. Otherwise, it wouldn't work. And that was very successful. But EFC, after 20 years, no longer wants to do that. And that's in part because the governor had created a $2 billion fund last year, and he wants EFC to give it out before the election. So, they don't wanna distract EFC from helping the city of New York in particular, I suppose, right? So, EFC has, is basically terminated their contract. So, I'm not getting paid, nobody is getting paid until the city retains somebody else to administer the program. And the city claims it takes a year for them to do that. They have retained, they're in negotiations with some type of water association, not-for-profit water association, I forget the name. Who's gonna do it? But we won't see that money until 2000, sometime in 2019. In the meantime, we can't, there's no money, you know, and, and, but... Riverwoods, for Riverwoods to do diversion is about, we believe, about $5.2 million, based upon what DOF had put together. For Riverwoods, if they don't do diversion, they would have to get a brand-new wastewater treatment plant paid for by the city of New York, called an MBR, and that's gonna at least be 5,000, if not, 5 million, if not 6 million.
Say 5,000, grab it.
Yeah, at least be 5 million, if not 6 million. But if we do that, the city has to subsidize the operation and maintenance, probably at a rate of 50%, so probably at a rate of about $100,000 a year in perpetuity. So, it makes a lot more sense, if you're going to choose the best regulatory upgrade for Riverwoods, it would be diversion. Take the sewage, ship it out of county, there's no long-term ongoing on the city's part. And so, the city has agreed that we don't need East of Hudson money. That they would, will do it as a regulatory upgrade, and regulatory upgrade, they pay 100%, 100% of my costs, 100% of the engineering costs, 100% of the construction cost. But we still need to get the numbers. We still need the, we still need a realistic, you know, proofed estimate of the cost of diversion. And, and we have had a hard time getting information from DOF. Maybe a hard time is an understatement, okay? So, we have, the association, we had an engineer, that was a regulatory upgrade engineer when we were in the program, Millens Engineering. And Millens is doing that study for that, and the board has actually allocated 20...
15.
15,000.
Which is what they quoted.
Yeah, so we're...
For an estimate.
The board is fronting that money.
Not detailed engineering plans, but a valid cost estimate.
And is that sufficient?
It's sufficient to get a number.
Yeah.
Okay, so that number, and that, and they're gonna do a detailed, I call it a detailed conceptual plan, but they're gonna truth it, make sure it's really doable, and then truth the number. So, we have a realistic number that we can compare, you know, that we can submit to the city, and our goal is to submit in on May 15, with the city getting back to us by June 15, that yes, diversion is the way to go. And if diversion is the way to go, then we could spend, we, you know, we could potentially convince Millens to do the detailed engineering design, knowing that in 2019, he's gonna be paid 100%. If I, if we can't, they'll just have to wait to 2019. I'm comfortable enough that I can go to Mount Kisco, where we're doing that connection, and get that agreement. You know, we have to negotiate an agreement with Mount Kisco. Unfortunately, DOF is their engineer, too. And the improvements that, you know, so there was a $1.2 million with improvements that were gonna be made to the Mount Kisco pump station, we're having a hard time understanding what those improvements are. And when we contacted Ed Bracotti, Mount Kisco's manager, he really didn't know either. So, but, we'll get it, we'll get there. So, so that's our plan. In the meantime, we want, we need to have the transportation corporation reformed. Okay, so we had a transportation corporation, formed in 86, and it shows up as late as 2000, I know it shows up as late as 2007.
It shows up as late, but no one can see that the franchise taxes or tax returns have been filed in at least 15 years.
Or was it dissolved? My reading was that it was dissolved.
The Secretary of State dissolves it when you don't pay your franchise taxes.
So, the operation of law just...
It just gets, yeah.
One would say, yes, it should have been, but if you go on their website, it says that it's not.
But it is.
But whether they say on the website it is or not...
We believe it has been.
So, so we put a petition together to form it, you know, I wrote the petition assuming diversion, but in reality, I don't know if diversion is gonna happen, so we need it, you know, if you give us, let us form it, we're gonna retransfer the plant back into their name, we're gonna retransfer the, give them easements for the stuff.
Who's operating the plant now? What entity is actually operating the plant?
Hal life pollution, John Muro.
But they're the operators, but I mean, what entity is collecting rents and paying...
It's the Fox Hollow Sewer Corporation.
No, no, who, the HOA.
It's Fox Hollow, but Fox Hollow's been dissolved.
Yeah, okay, it's still operating.
I know, but...
But how do you have bank accounts and pay bills?
Yeshiva and Random, and, and Riverwoods.
Yeshiva and Riverwoods paying to Fox Hollow, who pays the bills?
Oh, so you do, okay.
So, Fox Hollow has its own account.
It's dissolved.
Why don't, why don't you just reform Fox Hollow 1? Why can't, can you reform the original Fox Hollow 1?
Oh, I guess that's the same thing, I didn't...
If, if we, if we reformed it, we would have to go back and file the returns and pay the franchise taxes. And to reconstruct it over the last 15 years would be phenomenally expensive. So, we're taking the position that we're going to replace it, move all the assets into it, and walk away from the old one.
They're gonna let you do that?
No, what's the worst that they can do, then?
Yeah, now what?
We are voluntarily not doing now.
It's, we do it all the time, really. It just gets to be, you know, it gets to be hard to go back and file all those, you know, returns, and then pay the taxes, and then pay the penalties, and...
Yeah, I don't know enough about corporation law, as far as continuing to like operate bank accounts and dissolve corporation names and stuff, I, I, you know...
Who maintains a liability?
Insurance.
Insurance?
Right, so that's, but who, so Fox Hollow is paying insurance?
I would think...
Yeah, our insurance carrier ensures that Fox Hollow as well, as well as all the homeowner units, too, as well. That's an expense of the operating the sewer.
I would think if the corporation was dissolved, the assets of the corporation go by operation of law to the shareholders. And the shareholder is probably the HOA.
The shareholder is the HOA.
Is the HOA, so we, so what we're assuming is the HOA will issue, you know, is by default, the current owner. And that the HOA will transfer the assets back into the corporation.
The corporation that doesn't exist.
No, no, we're gonna transfer everything into the new corporation.
The new one that they wanna form.
Yeah, the new one.
We're gonna do quitclaim deeds from everybody into the new entity.
Okay.
And this is divided 58-42, is that...
Currently, yes.
Well, the HOA owns the, the HOA and the developer of that, Riverwoods built and owns the plant, but they built it on Yeshiva's property. So, so in exchange for allowing them to build it on Yeshiva's property, Yeshiva gets to use it.
The Yeshiva is not a shareholder of Fox Hollow, only Riverwoods is, are shareholders of Fox Hollow.
But they still pay into it because they...
Because the plant is built on Yeshiva land. We have a lease from Yeshiva that allows us to operate the plant for the next 100 years on their land in return for giving them a percentage of the, of the flow, and for which they pay.
So, is there an agreement that sets this forth?
Yes.
We can get a copy of that.
Of which, of town of Newcastle is a part of it.
I meant to attach it to the thing I had yesterday, but I couldn't find it, you know.
No, there'll be a couple of, I mean, I think a couple of documents we need to get.
Yeah, I know, I got it, I got it.
One of the questions I had was, and I, to make sure I'm understanding this right, I used the example once before as a, if the cemetery goes under in town, it's on town property, the town taxpayer may ultimately be responsible to support that cemetery if the cemetery can operate. So, in the event that there's an issue with the sewer treatment in Fox Hollow, what does the town have to protect itself from bearing the liability financially if for some reason, the HOA can't foot the bill?
So, you know, what the law is, if we, you allow us to form a transportation corporation. So, you're, what you're saying is, okay, this company has got, gets to like a exclusive franchise to provide sewage to this service area. If our comp, if we go belly up at the transportation, then the town has to form a sewer district for that exact service area. And all the costs of the sewer district have to be borne by the same property owners. So, the way it's set up, it's not the town board, town by that's at risk, but the property owners within the approved service area. So, that's, that's the way it's structured.
Can I just ask a follow-up question on that?
What?
So, we tried to form a sewer district with River, with Riverwoods and Yeshiva years ago, 2005 or '06, right in there? And the Secretary of State refused to sort of act the district, the costs were too great, so...
That, because that was the diversion going, pumping to Random Farms, Random Farms, Santa Mont Plessis, and that was like 25, 26 million dollars.
I, I understand, but if the plant, if, if, if for some reason, the plant isn't properly maintained, there aren't funds going into it, it goes belly up, and either the, the facility would have to be upgraded, or we go back to diversion. I mean, I'm just trying to figure out, I'm trying to wrap my head around how a district would be formed at that point when we couldn't have formed it years ago, when we tried.
I don't, I don't mean to answer that question. In other words, it's, it's already there, you know, I think by operation of law, you gotta have, you gotta have a district. I don't think the controller has a choice at that point in time.
They may, they may not, I mean, the town certainly had, under the transportation corporation law, the town has the responsibility, whether you do it through formation of a sewer district or some other process, again, I don't, I don't know what the answer to that is either. I think the idea is, there are revenues coming into the plant to continue it. I guess your question is if those revenues then become insufficient, and that's why the homeowners association goes under.
Right.
What, how is the town protected?
If it's not, and I understand, I'm not looking to get involved in who pays what directly, but if one party's paying 42, other party's paying 58, if it becomes an issue, you pick up the balance, they pick up the balance, the town gets stuck with the balance, you know, so I, I, I'm just, I'm concerned.
Okay, all right, so let's do it this way.
Are we talking forward diversion or after diversion?
I mean, do both, I'll do both.
Well, this is right now, 'cause what you're looking at is, right, what we, you're looking at, based on what Kevin had told me, is right now, you're looking for this sewer corporation to take, basically take over the operation of the plant at this point. So, let's stick with...
So, so, right now, if, if we have the transportation corporation, it's a corporation, it owns the plant, it has customers. Some customer doesn't pay, that transportation corporation is gonna have to get the money from its customers, not gonna get the money from someplace else. And, you know, the, the HOA, which has 148 homes, yet they're not gonna give up their homes, they're not gonna throw themselves under the bus. They're gonna have to come up with the money and sue Yeshiva for the money if Yeshiva didn't pay.
Well, we already did once.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And the town may be in that position if for some reason, the HOA can't do it.
They're not gonna work, yeah.
But that's your obligation regardless.
Yeah, now, the one thing about diversion is that, once we do diversion, we have two, we're now part of the Westchester Sewer District, and they formed North River 1A and North River 1B, and one's Yeshiva, and one's the, and they charge base, they just do real property tax. And based on the numbers in 2011, that when they allowed, created those districts, they're gonna pay about $992 in real property tax per unit. Random Farms is gonna pay like double that, should pay an unbelievable amount. Yeshiva had, you know, the assessment on Yeshiva is just very low, so they'll pay something. But the only cost that we will have at that point in time, the transportation corp, corporation will have, is to run the pump station.
For the diversion, yeah, after the diversion's in place, then you would have less risk at that point.
That's the big...
Yeah, that's the goal.
For operation, because the operation and maintenance is gonna be pretty low.
Yeah, it's gonna be about, we estimate about 49,000 or about 192.
And the payments are gonna go directly to, for the sewer capacity is gonna go directly to whatever the sewer, the Westchester County Sewer District, so you wouldn't be involved in that at all.
And you're, you're paying now, I think, over 1,000.
Yeah, it's about $115 a month per unit.
Per unit.
Okay.
Per month? Yeah.
So, operate... So, you have a, you have a service and a usage charge.
And that's, that's just our share, that's our...
And you have a usage fee and a certain, I guess it's, is there two components, or is it just...
Well, it's in the common charges.
It's just a common, yeah, so it's not based on...
Part of the common charge.
So, you don't meter each individual unit?
Oh, no, yeah. So, which is pretty expensive, as it is.
We're just, obviously, just to summarize, we're just concerned now that the transportation corporation goes belly up, and then you can't get the sewer district certified, somehow the town gets stuck paying the town.
Well, the, the new one's gonna go belly up, the old one's gonna go belly up without the new one. So, you're really in no worse shape with the new one than you would be with the old one.
I think they just want, and I, and there's a procedure under the transportation corporation law, and what we need to see, I think, is the financials showing the revenues coming in and what the operation and maintenance cost is, so we can, so the town board can be, you know, have a certain amount of confidence that, you know, it's an operating system, and, you know, I understand, certainly, you know, you guys have been around, and people aren't, you know, people aren't gonna wanna move out or anything like, but I think the transportation corporation law requires us to look at that, some of that financial information, and review it. Just for, for the town board's assurances on that end of things, even though you're planning to go into the diversion a year from now, maybe it won't matter, but the board needs it for now.
We wanna, let me say, we, we wanna help 100%, we just, the lawyers make us nervous, and we gotta cover...
Of course, we have an obligation, we gotta cover one of, you know, other bases.
We have an obligation to everybody in town, too, so we don't wanna run that risk of bearing it across everyone, even if you wanna facilitate...
So, just so that, so, on the other side, if we don't do diversion, I mean, you know, we have to be upgraded.
Right, no, absolutely, yeah.
And, and it's gonna be a new, brand-new MBR plant. And, you know, I've done seven of those MBR plants, those upgrades, and, you know, generally, if the lowest the city paid was 30, but that was, that was a totally different situation.
Of the operating.
Of the operating cost going forward, you know, they're pretty much 50 to like 90%, including, what's the real country club over here?
Riverwood, Mount Kisco?
No, the, um... I forget, but there's, you know, they're paying 85% for the country club, so, um, chat, not chat equity. It's a movie. All right, yeah, good movie, though.
There was, what would it be, Burnwood, that's an arm.
No, but anyway, so, so, and they're, you know... But they're, yeah, so my point is, what, what I've done in some other communities is I've agreed to take the money that the city pays, the city pays that money in advance, quarterly advances, and put that into an escrow account for which the town would have access to. You know, so you know that, you know, just as security for the ongoing operations.
I mean, is that, is that something, that's a feasible thing to do, when you're sharing...
Well, we would only be able to access it for a certain...
I understand, but if you're sharing that, and you look at an access, you're, you're sharing that access at a time of need.
Would you be using it for those purposes, for the maintenance of the current system? We'd have to have some kind of agreement from DEP, I guess, that that would be...
But you've done it before.
We've done that before, yeah.
Yeah, as long as we had an, you know, authorization from DEP that the monies could be used for those purposes, they would have to approve it, obviously, you know.
It's really in their best interest to keep the plant operating.
Yeah, they would, sure.
Yeah, I mean, I think we just need the financials showing, you know, a certain number, year, certain number of years of financials. We'd probably wanna have somebody just do, you know, the review of them, to make sure they show what we're supposed to show under this. And the, the HOA agreement, I guess, is what, is the other thing that we were talking about.
The agreement with Yeshiva.
The Yeshiva agreement, right, and, do you, I assume you have a speedies permit for the plant now?
Oh, yeah.
So, whatever, whatever approvals you can give us from DOH and the speedies permit, you're showing, you know, that the plan is up, you know, since we're not gonna get the maps and specifications, just so we can show DEP approval, so... Any DEP, the DEP approval, so that just we, we can go ahead with the consent at that point, so I think what's...
What's that?
Oh, yeah, the, the other issue is that the rates that you proposed for, after the diversion goes into place, I mean, my sense was that's getting the card, putting the cart a little before the horse. I mean, once we know the diversion's going ahead and you know the total cost, I think that would be the more appropriate time. You tell me if you think I'm wrong, right?
Yeah, I don't need the rates approved, no, yeah, no.
I mean, I understand, you know...
I was just trying to show you that it's...
I don't wanna have to run through another whole financial analysis on, you know, based on sort of hypotheticals.
No, I don't need that, I had it, so I gave it.
No, I appreciate it, so, okay.
Okay, all right, thank you. And, you know, just quickly, Random Farms is kind of on hold, because Random Farms, you know, is, that upgrade is 12, 13 million dollars, I mean, that diversion is 12 or 13 million dollars. If they got a standalone upgrade, it would be 5 or 6, or 6 million dollars, so...
Really?
Yeah, so, you know, there's a huge shortfall between the money that the city would pay for a regulatory upgrade and what the, and diversion, so...
Okay, can you just repeat those numbers to me, so I can write them down?
But that doesn't include the 10 million, I know that's...
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, so that, so you, so they have to get the access to the 10 million.
Which is on hold, and you guys, I thought you guys were gonna wanted 1 million of that, you don't need a penny of it.
We don't need it now.
Hope, yeah, well, depending what the cost is, and whether we hit rock.
For Random Farms, how much?
What?
The upgrade for Random Farms?
The upgrade for Random Farms is $6 million, so standalone MBR is $6 million.
Okay, so it's the same for both, it's just a matter of, the Riverwoods...
Yeah, it's the same plan, you know.
Right, okay.
What's the capacity on both of these, what's the capacity?
Capacity of our plant is 80,000 gallons per day.
Okay.
And we're only using, but we're only using, we're, we're using somewhere between 40,000 and 50,000 gallons.
Both developments combined?
That's, that's Yeshiva and that.
That's why they always come here, they use the bathroom here.
So, what, and do you get, is there a capacity on the diversion that they limit you to, or that's...
I, no, I mean, that's between us and Westchester County.
Right, no, I know.
So, you know, so Westchester County, you know...
They, they have plenty of capacity.
Would they let you hook, they would let you...
They have plenty of capacity of your younger's plant.
Right, oh, they do, okay.
And, and Mount Kisco Pump Station actually has it, too, they've actually done a lot of work on infiltration, and have reduced their flow considerably, even though they've expanded some to New York City. Give you an example also, my manufacturing plant happens to be in Mount Kisco on Radio Circle, and we have an electroplating operation, we used to use 28,000 gallons per day of water. By conservation, counter-current rinses and all that sort of stuff, we're down to 4,000 gallons per day now. So, I mean, the Mount Kisco over there saved 24,000 gallons.
Okay. Kevin, I'm sorry, the, the number for diversion for Random Farms?
I, I, it, uh, it's 12 or 13 million, it's in, it's in a report that you guys paid for.
And DOF was around somewhere between 48 and 52, but that included 1 million, as Kevin said, a million and two for upgrading the Mount Kisco pump station, plus $300,000 for demolishing the old plant, the current WWTP.
When did that year clock start for the, when the EFC was dissolved?
And, oh, I don't, oh...
It wasn't dissolved, but they were more than that, it's 10 million anymore, and they said, they said you have to wait a year.
It's, it's, in mid, in 2017, the contract between EFC and DEP expired.
Right.
They signed a new contract, but then the controller of the city wouldn't register it. So, EFC refused to do any work for most of 2017. And then finally, when the controller registered it, EFC refused to do work because the governor didn't want them to. So, it's been, it's been a long period of time where we, you know, where this program has been stalled.
But we don't know when it's gonna be, didn't you say that it's like a year waiting list or something?
I'm saying that...
Not waiting list, I mean waiting.
That for the city to retain...
New York City.
Yeah, for New York City to retain a new administrator, it's gonna be until the beginning of 2019.
Okay, that's for the 10 million.
Yeah, and so, that's, Random Farms is just on total hold until then, 'cause...
You can't get the funding until, you can't even start to get the funding until then, I got you, yeah. We're going through them, we're in the middle of that in Bedford today now, so it's interesting.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Do you have a copy of the Yeshiva contract?
I, I, you guys sent it to me, but you had all those lawsuits, too, is that right?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Eric, really appreciate it.
Take care, guys, yep, any questions, let me know, and...
Have you seen us all running out in two minutes screaming, you don't think we're gonna ride?
These guys look pretty tough here, so...
I'm kidding, I'm only kidding.
All right, true.
I feel like my parents about to leave, you know?
My daughter was jumping out of airplanes here or something.
No, no, no.
Really? She was, she was in Portugal, and she's tied, she went skydiving.
Have you spoken to her?
She texted me afterwards, saying, you know, I went skydiving, so I assume it's over. Take care of her.
Thank you.
All right, good night.
Good night.
Okay, next on the agenda is trap line. I know we have some presidents here in attendance, including Google, who has prepared a lot of materials on this. And basically, I'll give you guys a little background, what I, what I wrote to the town board, and I'll, I'll say it publicly, and I have it in my supervisor's report as well. And basically, I'll give you guys a little background, what I, what I wrote to the town board, and I'll, I'll say it publicly, and I have it in my supervisor's report as well. Downtowns all across the country are going through changes, thanks to the internet. And, um, there's vacancies all over small towns, mom and pop shops going out of business. And our, our town actually is in better shape than most towns, Scarsdale, Greenwich, Mount Kisko. But be that as it may, the situation is not gonna remedy itself, towns are gonna need to redefine themselves, and, um. And that's, I feel we have an obligation as a town board to do. So, in an effort to help merchants in our town, um, and to increase, we also adopted a comprehensive plan last year. It was pretty clear, some of the goals as far as increasing walkability and, and making our downtown more vibrant, that's, that was really not much interpretation there. That was a clear sentiment of the community in the public outreach sessions, they want vibrant, uh, business districts. So, um, you know, the goal is, how are we gonna accomplish that? And we're not gonna accomplish it by just putting up signs that say, shop local and, uh, stroll into the spring. Although those signs theoretically could help, um, we have to do more. So, we have a revitalization project going on now, and that's gonna increase the walkability and more pedestrian spaces, and, uh, that should help. And, um, we need to do more, we need to look at our zoning, to try to get more people living downtown, that's what towns all across America are doing. Pretty much what's happening in Chapo Crossing, we sort of need to happen down here, uh, which is traditional neighborhood design. We have people living, working and playing within walking distance of each other. So, uh, we've looked into sidewalks on one seventeen, they're, you know, ridiculously expensive, state, state highway, state road. Uh, they require us to take at least thirteen feet of property, we're not talking easement.
Where's this, that you're talking about, you're looking at the sidewalks for what?
One sev- one seventeen, one seventeen, it's a state, it's a state, so that would cost millions and millions of dollars, um, for sidewalks.
One seventeen, one seventeen.
Gotcha, alright, I got you, alright, I missed that.
Yeah, beyond the money, it's the, the fact that New York State D O T now requires, uh, four foot sidewalk, four foot snow shelf, um, along the side of the road. And it used to be that they would allow us to, um, obtain easements from residents, now they require us to take a taking. So, it adds to the cost of the budget that we need to pay and actually take the title from those homeowners all along either one seventeen, whatever state road it is that we've selected. Um, to install the sidewalk, and actually take their property from them, um, and so it's just.
For the pedestrian walkway.
For sidewalks, that's, yeah, that's, that'd be the same purpose, so we have this, this idea for a chap line. Which, you know, really makes a lot of sense, I know there's some people that are opposed to it, I, I get that. But, uh, really makes a lot of sense as far as, uh, connecting two business districts, Chapo Crossing to downtown Chapo Qua. I think we've done some studies where four hundred homes, uh, would be able to access the trail, be able to walk to downtown Chapo Qua, bike to downtown Chapo Qua. Go to the stores in downtown Chapo Qua, spend their money, which is obviously the goal. And, um, you know, it's, uh, it makes a lot of sense, but, you know, we do realize that there are some people who, um, would be concerned about having a multi-use trail, uh, in their backyard, there's always concerns about development, uh, change near people's property. So, that's, that's understandable. And, um, there's a lot of studies online, where you can research it as far as property values, whether they increase or decrease by having a multi-use trail near your property. I think, I think you'll find that they actually increase. There's also a lot of studies online about how to deal with some of the, the neighbors who are legitimately concerned, some of the, you know, issues that come up. And how other towns have dealt with those issues. So, what I had suggested is that we explore the chap line, is, you know, every time I raise it, I have a number of people who reach out to me and, and say, that sounds great, how can I help? Every time I speak to a real estate broker, they ask me what's happening with that, I speak to the real estate brokers quite often, I go to their meetings on Tuesday mornings to give them updates about what's, what's happening in town, it's always a question I get.
The school is generally in favor of it?
The school is a hundred percent in favor, but, because what happens is we have our cross-country team that are right now running on Route one seventeen, this narrow windy road. So, they would, they would love to get them off the road and onto this trail, this, really boosters are in favor of it, they would love to be able to get our tracking cross-country team off our roads. So, you know, what I'm suggesting is that we form a committee, and the committee would be by people who are in favor of it, and people who are concerned about how it would affect their homes, may, whether it be security or privacy, whatever their issues are. And, and then also have just as many interested parties as possible, somebody from the school, somebody from the, um. Who knows, real estate offices, whatever it is, but just to get a whole bunch of, I mean, this, and this is where other, other communities have done it. You get a whole bunch of interested parties together to, to work on all the issues, because at the end of the day, I think we all want what, what's best for the community. And, um, but people have legitimate concerns about, uh, a trail that's gonna be used by their public, um, in close proximity to their house, so that's certainly understandable. But, you know, I think as, as a town board, we have a responsibility to look after the town as a whole. And to, we certainly have a huge responsibility to, to deal with changing times. And, um, downtowns are, are changing before, retail is, you talk to any commercial real estate broker, you, you just look around, New York City everywhere, I mean, there's vacancies everywhere. The landscape is changing for retail everywhere, and, uh, downtowns are gonna need to redefine themselves, and that's not gonna happen.
I think that's gonna happen on its own, though, I mean, I, I do commercial finance for a living, I don't mean to cut you off, but I think.
I guess, I guess, I guess we could disagree on that, because there's plenty of people who, plenty of towns who are spending a lot of resources to figure it out, to work with private developers, but it's not just gonna happen on its own, if it, if you expect it to happen on its own.
No, no, I don't mean that, what I mean is, there are some forces that are, that are at play that are uncontrollable, I mean. The, the, the main issue with retail is primarily a function of rent, right, and what they pay per, per square foot. You have lower foot traffic due to certain online retailing, the, the, the makeup of the retail mix in downtowns are a challenge. But what you have going on here, you have a lot of property owners who have borrowed money against properties that were based upon cap rates and rents that were supporting that, now they're, they can't get those rents, but the debt is still there. So, at some point, they, they cannot, they have two choices, they're either gonna default on a loan, cause I, I would suspect the majority of that, not just in Chapo Qua. Across downtown, the majority of the retail mixed use buildings have debt on them. And at some point, there's gonna be a reckoning like there was, and that's the point, what it means, that's gonna fix itself. Cause you could build as many bike paths and walk paths as you want, as long as Amazon is delivering by drone. You know, certain things, the convenience factor, so, so the retail mix, the market's gonna have to fix that, there's gonna be some pain, I'm not saying the city should do nothing. But I think that, um, from, we, we should be thoughtful in, in, in how we think we can fix the problem. Cause I, cause I think socially engineering a retail mix is a challenge, because that's not gonna pay the rent.
Yeah, no, but, I don't.
You understand, I, I, I don't disagree with, I'm not saying do nothing, I'm saying.
There's no question that.
The solution is bigger, and more the challenge is big.
What I, what I said to somebody today is, you know, if somebody needs something in downtown and they get in their car and they have to drive like me, uh, you know, ten minutes to get there, whatever, and find a spot and get out of your car and go into the store to pick up that one thing. You know, there's something to be said for, uh, going on Amazon and getting it in three seconds. But if you could go to town, I mean, this is what we're trying to do here with this, you know, this revitalization. If you can go to town, park your car, get a cup of coffee, sit outside, maybe, you know, see some friends or neighbors that you hang out with and talk. You know, get some lunch, whatever, it, it's a more of an experience down there, and if you could drive, ride your bikes to town, or if you could walk to town with a baby carriage, it becomes a more experience. That's what you have to try to make it, that's what, that's what some type of communities are trying to do, they're trying to make the downtown more of an experience. It's not just to go into the hardware store to pick up something, you gotta try to offer more. If people are gonna come downtown, you gotta make it more of a, more of an experience.
You know, I, I think that there is potentially tremendous asset value, pardon me, in what Rob is generally advocating for, which is a path from Chapo Crossing to downtown. Where it is aside, a, a footpath to get, to get from A to B. And I agree with Rob that the more people that come downtown, you may not get everyone buying something, but more people, brings people in more, brings more and some livelihood, more feeling, and people see something a lot more attractive and know that they can get around by foot. But there are, there are some practical realities that need to be addressed, and, um, I spoke with Daniel Google, Van Google about it, you know, in, and I told him, I think in principle, I, I support the concept. But my concerns, just as sort of bullets here, you know, what, what is the cost going to be? Is it going to be on people's property? I'm not a big fan of sacrificing a few for the good of the many, that being said, what is the sacrifice? I don't see this impacting certain businesses while helping others, so for example, I may come down and get some coffee, I may go down to Villarinas, I may go down to Le Jardin. But, you know, my, my wife, for example, got some sport coats for my kids at, uh, Family Bridge's, no one's parking up at Chapo Crossing, walking downtown and picking up sport coats and walking back, it just, it's just not.
Electric shuttle.
Yeah, it's, but even then, so that's it, I just don't know how.
See, but to me, it's so much more than that.
Hold on, let me just, I'm, I'm, let me finish, so, um, it does create a greater sense of community. I even think, for example, if people are gonna walk back and forth, where are they gonna park their car at, either Chapo Crossing or Parkin Downtown, because they may not wanna go both ways, they may say, oh, well, one way. Um, and Electric Shuttle make it some use, but it's not equipped to carry that many people realistically, God willing, you have a lot of people who wanna go to both places. I even think from, you know, materials to width, um, is it going to be, are we gonna have it patrolled by the police? Uh, on bike or on foot, do we wanna have an emergency telephone system that someone could call as opposed to using their cellphone? Because that, instead of bouncing off its cell tower, goes directly to the Newcastle Police Department. So, there's just a lot of things to think through, because I do believe it has a tremendous value. But where you live, for example, you know, do, 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 do you want, which I'm sure the answer is gonna be no, do you want twenty, thirty, forty, eighty people walking across your house every day? Probably not, that being said, I live by me.
I'm agnostic to it, I mean, so, so I think, I think that, that, the concern is, right, um, and I'm, and, and I'm on the board.
Security.
Yeah, well, security's part of it, but there, 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 there's a safety aspect of it, you, you, you talk about bike paths, right? A lot of little kids in the development, um, you know, I've been to Central Park in New York City, where some people think they're, you know, it, it's, it's, they're, they're on the Grand Prix on the bike. And they go screaming down, how do you police something like that, so bike would give me a concern. Our biggest problem, to be quite honest with you, is people don't clean up after their dogs right now, and, and a, a chap line like that would be inviting more people and it might end up as some sort of half-baked dog run, um, those are the things, and then who's responsible for maintaining? You know, would people walk there through the?
Well, there is a bike trail, you know, one, one second, one second, there is, you know, we, we would have to look, and the reason we would form a committee is to talk about all these things, but there aren't bike trails in town.
Safety and maintenance are the two biggest concerns.
To me, the biggest reason to have this, yes, it's connecting downtown, but to give our kids and our residents the ability to walk more. And to really feel like we're still part of a somewhat rural community where we can walk with our neighbors, meet for a walk, walk downtown. You can't, this whole side of town, you can't walk on one seventeen at all. And, and, you know, it's been talked about for years to build sidewalks, we need more walkability, we just did a comp plan, talking about how we need more walkability and wait for residents to just enjoy the town and not have to get in their cars, and we can't build sidewalks on one seventeen. So, to be able to connect two huge areas of town, to me, is just so important.
Well, you have a natural barrier to, to think about, I mean, there's a pretty big hill.
There's a hill, but there.
Right, I'm just saying, but that is a natural barrier, you can consider it from, from a walking perspective, just point it out there.
I don't, I plan to walk up the hill.
So, can I ask, since I brought up the plan, uh, a few years ago now, sorry, I'll just come here quick.
Yeah, yeah.
So, first of all, I have the best intentions for this, having come from New York, what I miss, the one thing I miss the most is walking and having my kids.
Just, just introduce yourself there.
Sorry, Dan Google.
You don't have to look up on there, but.
Um, and, and so, what I miss the most is the, the, of being able to walk and having to get in the car to go anywhere. I live across, um, right off of Whipper Will, so, from us, we would be able to walk across the one street into the high school, and then from the high school. So, you're, everyone's talking about connecting Chapo Qua Crossing with downtown, don't forget that for the back of the high school goes directly down onto that path as well. Um, and when I realized that there was already a path that was graded there on the trunk line, so it already exists for the most part, there are some sections where it's not there. I thought it would, what a wonderful idea just to allow people to use it, just a little bit of sprucing up. I recognize that it does, you know, there are property owners, and, and my hope was that people would be able to, you know, there would be solutions that we could work with them to make it so that it would be, you know, seen as a plus for them. Uh, when I go on the bike trail, um, you know, further up, there are lots of houses with nice little gates and, or they'll even put ramps directly onto it so that their kids can probably go onto it, and and I reckon that, or the, um, the Cron Aqueduct Trail, you just look at all the condos that goes through, or the houses right along it. And I often drive all the way there to walk from, um, Irvington to Dobbs Ferry to whatever, to get lunch and then go back, just so we have a night, a place to walk. Uh, or ride your bike on that, um, and that's a good example of one that's not even paved, but people ride their bikes. Um, so, it, the idea was a lot of high school kids, and, you know, would be able to walk to school, instead of taking, you know, I know so many people drive or they shouldn't be driving, and, and they should be taking the bus. That would be quicker for them if they live downtown to actually get on a bike and go to their high school. Uh, and those same kids could be able to get downtown or to Chapo Qua Crossing, obviously they can just walk there, but it would be an option to go downtown. But it also is the whole recreational thing, it's only, it's less than a mile, um, so this is not a place that you're gonna have bikers who are speed demons trying to get their exercise in. This is really meant more as a connection path, um, in concept. The other things, you know, just as a first step that I think, which is, uh, I think would be good is, if you look at all the other parks we have in town, whether it's Whipper Will or Glazer Arboretum or, or whatnot. A first step might be, where it's already graded and clear and on town or school property, open it up. And then maybe it's a matter of using the Parks, um, Committee or whatever it's called, and maybe the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts, and, and you can, you know, make a path that's a, just a walking path like in all those other parks, that sticks to town-owned property to finish the way around. Um, and, you know, we can still work with the people who are in the area but not on their property, um, just to connect it for now, obviously that wouldn't be a bike path, but you could still uh, get there, and you could just like, if you, you look at all these parks where, where there are some wetlands, in Glazer Arboretum, I think it is. You know, they just put the wood planks that are float right across, and you walk right along those, or you could put stone steps down into the one ravine that is in there. So, I think there are ways that would, that would be extremely inexpensive, keeping to town property as a first step, um, just to throw that out there. But, you know, I, I recognize there are people and, and, you know, with rightful concerns, um, you know, it was my hope that we'd be able to work with them. But I thought that this would be something that, you know, obviously, I saw as something that I would want to use and my family would want to use, and, and I, I thought it'd be a wonderful, you know, plus for, for the town.
And also, I mean, you, you did a great PowerPoint presentation, but I don't wanna take anything away from you, but this, this is an idea that's been out there for a long time, you know. Jerry Fiallo was the town administrator, you know, years ago, and I, I don't remember when. He, he had this idea and he explored, and we have plans from twenty years ago that talk about this, uh, to a different homeowner, the homeowners affected back then. But, um, this is an idea that's been out there for a long time, and, and to be honest with you, I've been at this now for four years, at least two, and, uh. It, it's something that, uh, you know, it's, it makes a lot of sense, and it's, it's not to say that just people that live near there don't have legitimate concerns, but it's a type of thing where it's, it deserves some serious consideration, cause it makes a lot of sense.
Can I speak now, please?
Sure.
Do you want me to sit here?
It's up to you.
Okay, um, so, I'm Julian Metzger, I know you, all of you on the board have received the letter from our neighbors, and I'm sorry to jump in, I just got a text that I have my daughter's backpack in my car. So, she's been waiting now to do her homework, so I wanted to just speak. I wanna thank Ivy for letting me know yesterday that this was going to be on the agenda today, because we wouldn't have known, we feel like we are as important as anyone to be included in the conversation about this. Um, as anyone in the town, since we are the homeowners who the, had the trunk line literally crosses through the property that we own, there's no avoiding that. If, if the trunk line, it is taking our property, it is a path literally in our yard. So, that, that being said, um, we can, I can't pretend like that's not really, really important. So that that being said, um we can, I can't pretend like that's not really, really important to me and that that's not a top issue and why that I'm I'm opposed to this. But we also have a lot of other feelings about reasons why we think it's not a good idea. We think that there are a lot of safety issues that we would have to be concerned about, not just for our property, but for the high school. We have familiarity with a path that goes from our neighborhood into the high school, which we support, even though it's on private property and in our on our private street. Kids get dri- drive in, get dropped off um to walk to high school. We ensure that path, we clean that path, we know the things that go on on that path that are drug use, things that, you know, happen in paths that are off of high schools. We feel like in this climate where there's literally this weak um proposals about how we should secure the high school campus, whether it be the building or the entire property with a with a big fence, that to be building a path directly from the high school to the Metro North train seems like it would be inviting possible problems also and um and then there's parking, where are people parking from one to the other? And so we just feel like we are in a um a unique position to know what possible issues are, and yes, of course, we are concerned that there's discussion about putting a path through our yards. So we are not, we oppose it, we've written letters, you know how we feel about it, and we wanted to show up tonight when we were told that it was gonna be on the agenda to um make that clear.
Thank you, well, the school, just so you know, the school, you know, I can't speak for the current school board, but the prior school board, they were in favor of it, um and the school would have to give us an easement. So and I, we're all well aware of the security issues and I I I, from speaking to various people, I I still think they're in favor of it.
Even though they're now talking about putting a fence around the whole property?
Yeah, part part of the reason is because, first of all, there's gonna be a fence with this particular path, so actually there's gonna be a fence um that separates the path from the property owners. And the other issue is that uh there's there's a lot of people that have a real concern with having a cross-country team on the road.
They run in our neighborhood.
Well, they also run on one seventeen and.
Maybe, but they run every day, they run in our neighborhood, you see them.
I know, but there's a lot of parents who, you know, are very concerned about that. You know, they don't like their, they don't like, well, the, you know, the parents whose kids are running on one seventeen, they don't really, you know, the
They're running in our neighborhood.
And the school is concerned about that as for their liability, it's their, it's their, it's their.
There's only gonna be more traffic there.
It's their, it's their, it's their team that's out there on the streets, and the really boosters are concerned about it, so there's a lot of organizations that
On the Chapel Crossing.
would love to see the, and this is for years, they would love to see the cross-country team off the busy streets, I mean, if there were sidewalks, that'd obviously be better, but there aren't. But the point is, there's there's a lot of stakeholders involved, and we don't necessarily need to go on your property either. Following the trunk line is certainly one option, nobody says we have to follow it a hundred percent. There is, you know, there's there's different paths we can take. The the thing is, you know, it's it's a discussion, it's the the goal is, if you look at it, there are definitely benefits to it and there are definitely concerns. And it's the type of thing that should be explored, you know, it should be explored, and we did a feasibility study a couple of years ago, but you know, we did a, Westchester County did it for us for free, and unfortunately, you get what you pay for. Because, you know, they came back with a ten million dollar price tag because essentially it was, let's build a mile and a half boardwalk. That was not the intention of this of this project, uh you could build a ten mile and a half boardwalk anywhere, you know, that wasn't the goal. Uh the goal was to sort of just uh improve an existing path. So that that, you know, we need, you know, we should do a real feasibility study and and you know, consider the wetlands and consider all the other options there are and and explore it and get the concerns of the neighbors and really try to make it a win-win to the extent possible.
You know, back back to another question too, right now, if I'm not mistaken, we stop our new sidewalks at the post office or right around the post office?
No, we're restoring that.
So i- if if this is even something to consider, you need to have something either nice and safe and even and usable where people will walk as opposed to just walking into the streets from the easement all the way south.
There's there's no question that, I mean, in my opinion, if we were to do this, we would absolutely one hundred percent restore those sidewalks that were, you know, leading to Chestnut uh Oaks, but we we're probably gonna do that anyway, so you know, I mean, the goal, the goal is to do that anyway.
Well, the the board approved.
Well, we put in with the with the goal of getting to that point.
Yeah, I don't know that. Well, no, no, the the board approved um the installation of the granite curving straight through the to Chestnut Oaks.
Correct.
Cuz that's.
Uh which is always our intention.
You can't do sidewalks without the curve.
They run along there all the time, yeah, it's it is kinda interesting that that sidewalk ends there, but.
Well, it's private property.
Yeah.
Oh, it is, I mean, no, I'm talking about oh on on between Bischof and Maple's not private property, there's no sidewalk there.
Right, it's weird, I I don't know why they stopped there.
It's like there's a sidewalk to the edge of Chestnut, uh and then then a pass in front of that house and with an ambulance corps, and then there's no sidewalk on either side between Bischof and Maple, then a sidewalk starts again across Maple.
I I don't, I certainly, I'm in agreement that that we should form some form of committee because ultimately there's merit to both sides, but I think Dan, Dan's concept, what if it minimizes or removes private homeowners, we have a way to make sure it's clean and safe and monitored and the costs are reasonable, it could be, it could be a huge win, but there's also, in my view, ifs and need to figure outs in advance before we just go, okay, let's do this, let's figure it out.
Yeah, we definitely need to look at it and look, people are using that path now, and there may be things going on on that path that shouldn't be going on on that path, and maybe if it was policed or a more regularly used path, things wouldn't go on as often as they do on that path, it was just alluded to, that they know what's going on with high school kids and so that's something to look at too.
The prob- the problem is, it's not really a problem, it's sort of just happens. Just studying something doesn't mean we're we're doing it, you know, we're just you're studying it and you wanna get the stakeholders, and you want the stakeholders to be people that are concerned also, you don't you don't wanna just people who are in favor of it, you want it to be people who are con- concerned and get their get their input and study it, it may, it may, even if everybody agrees that there's a a feasible option, there's still hurdles, approvals that are necessary from the county or the cost could be prohibitive, so but it's a type of thing where it just deserves to really be looked at hard and we haven't done that yet. We did a feasibility study, they really didn't study what we asked them to, what they misunderstood we wanted, and that was it, we just left it alone and you know, it just, it should be explored in in my opinion.
And I'll and I'll concede to your point, we have people walking through our development anyway, it's not like, we don't have a gate up, you know, um so it's it's not about not wanting people through, but I think to your point, monitoring, cleanliness, who's responsible for maintenance and and how it's built would would be the biggest concerns, I I would probably say that I I would be in agreement, there are probably more pluses than minuses on it overall for the community at large. But the those detractors are pretty big ones, so 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 it needs to be thoughtfully done, and there's other things to consider based on easement, because for those of you who don't know, in Chestnut Oaks, it widens, but it's pretty narrow at the entrance, so 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 I don't know, I'm not a land use engineer, so I don't know if there's a a way to snake it in and out and around where, you know, safety is an issue, cuz there is no sidewalk on either side, and on one sidewalk on one side, and it's road, it's a two-way street there, so.
No, no, got it. No, and and it would have to be, you know, we already know, it has to be ADA compliant. So that means that there's only certain materials you can make it from, you know, it's it has to be something where, you know, a wheelchair, a baby carriage, a bicycle.
Not the path, the path that I needed compliant, I thought only if we were doing.
Paving it, it's not paved.
Pave, yeah, I I maybe I'm speaking incorrectly, I thought it didn't have to be.
Then it's like a hiking trail. It it all, again.
Yeah. I mean, you make right.
No, 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 it it all depends where the monies are coming from, it all depends, you know, how the funding is.
If you made a new trail in Whopper Will, I would imagine, you know, part of you would have to have a Genny Park uh make.
Right, Genny Park. Right, through the woods, but if, you know, if we're getting grants,
Right, depending on.
you know, this all the there there are, yeah, depending upon the grants and things like that, so these are all just things we have to consider.
Depending on the grant, I guess.
By the way, there are grant, there are a lot of grants for these type of things, not just for increasing walkability and and bike biking, but there's also grants for connectivity, there's grants for, there's one grant I came across where there's Trails to Rails. Cuz it's essentially a a trail that goes to the train station, so Trails to Rails. Uh there's a lot of, this this falls under a lot of different grants, recreational activities, you could have granted, like they they have trails where it could be a mile and a half, you could have exercise equipment along the way, um and then there's grants for that. So there's a lot of really cool uh stuff out there, cuz this is the type of thing, again, there's concerns that have to be addressed, but this is the type of thing that it hits so many, checks off so many boxes, that, you know, they try to encourage this type of things.
My my position, I don't think anyone disagrees, is that if we have a committee, uh there should be not only, I don't know, you were saying this, uh to be very clear, those who advocate for it, and those who, for example, in your community who may not want it, and people in your community who are mainly adjacent to it, so that
Right.
Yeah, definitely. Absolutely. Yeah.
if there's some sort of agreement, that'll certainly be beneficial to know that in advance, or there's some issues that are are insurmountable that we should know in advance as well.
I mean.
And then people potentially who are just agnostic to the whole thing, who just may have facts and information that we would need to analyze in order to look at it both ways.
I mean, the issues that our community would be facing with this trail is not unique. Every community, you know, a lot of communities that have these type of trails face the same issues. Crime, safety, those issues, privacy, so and that's what they they suggest you do, is is to get all the stakeholders involved and see if you can you know, to the extent possible, you know, satisfy risk concerns. Because at the end of the day, if it gets built the right way, it could be a win-win. But you need everybody, you need all the stakeholders involved, so that everybody feels that way.
And they know best of all what their concerns are and can identify the issues that we're gonna have to look at in order to go forward.
Right.
Does anyone else who's here have any comments or any questions?
My concern was the same thing that she got it before, is that this is the same week they came to us and asked for a survey to make the high school more secure, and then three days later, we find out that this is being considered again, and I I also live on the path and um I I'm concerned.
We certainly would wanna get either members of the school board or the administration obviously involved, we I've spoken to them too, and they actually do seem in favor of it, um but we would certainly wanna get their input as well.
I mean, you know.
It wouldn't be done, it wouldn't be done in a vacuum.
I would be surprised that they would be wanting to fence in the entire school and that they want access to a public path that they just.
I don't, I don't think they necessarily want to fence in the entire school, I think, I mean, I could be wrong, I I
Yeah, but it's.
I think that that was a proposal, they hired a consultant, it was a suggestion by the consultant and they're asking the community for feedback, and and if it, if they approve it on April thirtieth, it would go, it would go to a vote. I don't necessarily, if you talk to school board members, I don't think they would all necessarily say that that's the best approach. They're just throwing out an approach that their consultant told them and say, hey, let's listen to what people say. Another option is just having, you know, uh what do they call it, the gate at the front, you know, whatever that's called again, a security gate, and yes, coming down, you know, having one entrance instead of four different entrances and having, you know, security cards or.
Instead instead of speculating, I think, but the bottom line is, we have to find out, instead of us just.
Right, but I'm just saying, I don't think the school boards is a favorite.
No, they're trying to make this more safe, and that doesn't seem like a very smart way to have a path that needs to be.
And maybe, maybe someone from the school could be on the committee.
No, absolutely, the school should.
Absolutely, sure.
Well, who knows, if the path would have been less than it is now, people are on that path now anyway.
Cuz they would have an easement.
If it's more police than it is now, maybe that's a good thing, but I don't know, it's something that would have to be studied.
The small path from our.
Yeah, we're talking about the path that goes through past the tennis courts into our neighborhood. That's the path that she was talking about.
Oh, okay, no, no, different path.
D- different path.
That's a different path, no, no, no.
It's a path that goes around our neighborhood, past the tennis courts and the football field into the school.
Right, no, that's not what the path I was talking about.
And that's where kids go to restaurants and smoke cigarettes and, you know, well, yes, leave the trash.
No, this this path, they used to.
Yeah, they're. Yeah.
Oh, we shut up the police there now, they're sitting there anyway now.
If you, if you, uh if you, if you take a tour of it, you'll see.
It's well-traveled.
Yeah.
Very well-traveled.
No, 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 the one behind you.
I'm not so mad yours, I'm talking.
No, not not yours, not yours. Not not yours, we're talking about this one, the tennis courts.
I'm not so mad, but not by tennis.
The one behind the school.
So I think, I think we're gonna.
It's a different path.
We're talking about two different paths.
Different path, yeah.
One more forward.
They're both.
Now, that's side one that goes right into directly into your neighborhood, the school.
Yeah.
No, 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 that's not the one with the, she's talking about the chap line path.
No, I'm talking about the one that's being used now that goes to the school.
Oh, from from by way.
Right, right.
From, yeah, by one.
Yeah, you got it, yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, so there's gonna be more conversations.
Alright. Yeah, we're not doing anything, we're just contemplating starting a committee, and all the stakeholders, not all the stakeholders, but try to get as many, you know, stakehold, different stakeholders involved.
You guys might pick some representatives from your neighborhood to sit on, I mean, with not that eighty people on it.
And, yeah. Lawrence Farms, uh but East, those get confused, East, South and Chestnut Oaks and some of the school
South.
and whoever else we can think of.
So how do we, how do we know you're saying the committee?
We'll reach out. We'll reach out to.
We'll 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 be publicized and.
We'll reach, and we'll, and we'll make an effort to reach out to, and you could even, if you guys wanna sign in, if you wanna sign up
Gotcha, gotcha, okay, alright.
Yes.
a sheet right now, you can put down your name and address, so you can add your name to any email, but we'd reach out to the president of homeowners association,
Great idea.
same with Lawrence Farms East and uh South, South.
Not or not, whatever you, yeah, please.
I take I take your newsletters.
Oh, good, yeah, but that's usually how we get, yeah.
Right, but that's, we should, but something like this, we would focus, you know, on the individual people, like when there's projects, like Chapel Crossing, for example, you know, there was emails that went out to fifty people that lived near there, you know, with Rose Hill, there's emails about the different fifty people, you know, that's people you you form an email list for the affected people to keep them in the loop.
Yeah, and we have, we have this from the prior times that we, you know, had discussions about it.
We know the homeowners also be affected, we have their names and addresses, we have their email addresses, we can get this soon enough. Okay, so we're gonna move on to the next item on our agenda, okay?
Exactly.
Do you wanna, do you guys wanna sign up?
Would you, before you leave?
Dan, we got you ready.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You wanna sign?
Alright, goodnight, well, we'll, we'll let it, it's okay.
Yeah, where's that other guy?
We we know ours too, it's uh.
Is that the end of our our work session?
That's the end of our work session, and we're gonna go to our to our.
To adjourn now for tomorrow.
Thank you, guys, alright, thank you, goodnight.
Thank you, thank you. Can I stop?
Yes.
It's okay, motion adjourned, what?
I move to, I'm like, motion adjourned.
Second, all in favor, aye.